The special meeting of the Cherokee Village City Council will come to order.
We all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to recognize a moment of silence. Will the clerk call the roll?
Rowland, here. Harrison, here. Tatum.
Here.
Hathley.
Here.
Ishmael.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
And the mayor.
Here. Need a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Motion we approve, second.
Tatum. Mr. Smith, motions is approved, agenda, Mr. Tatum seconds, all in favor?
Discussion?
Discussion, okay, go for it.
Uh, mayor and clerk's salary, at what point in time was that table? Because I reviewed the tapes from December and January and didn't see it in either one. In December, I asked about bringing the clerk up to the same starting salary since it's technically her, her election, her first election, and that, nothing happened with it. So, I'm, I'm questioning about the mayor and the clerk's salary, when, when was that table? And, and why is it on this agenda?
May I respond, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr.
During the January council meeting, it was brought to a vote by this council to include the mayor's and clerk's salary in this special meeting.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
I have a comment. Peter, are you talking about the January meeting or the December? Because I was, I was confused at the last meeting when it was said it was tabled in December. It wasn't, what, yeah, it was never tabled. It was brought up and then nothing came of it. And then last night, whenever it was reintroduced, it was introduced as a tabled issue. So, I don't have a problem with it being on the agenda.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
I think there's just a correction that it was never a tabled issue.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember it being discussed as a tabled issue. I remember it being, it kept getting moved. It was not, uh, as a proverbial can gets kicked down the, kicked down the road, it kept getting moved. But at the last January regular meeting, it was voted to be put on, voted to be put on with this special financials since it's all to do with financials.
Yes, correct.
So, looking for a vote. Have a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The nays like side, motion passes. So, we'll go, do we have any public comments or questions on the agenda items? See ain't none, we'll just move into it. So, we're into the financial report, the reason we're here. So, the floor is open for discussion.
Uh, okay, general fund administration, uh...
Do you want to go through them individually or?
Well, I, this is, this is my question, which was part of my question last time. A specific example, NEA grant that was approved in 2019.
Yes.
So, there was a grant approved or had a resolution written in 2019?
Yes.
In 2020, it was not in the budget. In 2021, it was not in the budget. In 2022, somebody decided to put it in the budget without asking council and spent the money. Now, if we go back and look at the original, uh, the original minutes from, uh, 2019, it says that a maximum of $25,000 shall be spent, a maximum of $25,000. In the budget, it's a tad bit more than $25,000 and it was never approved by this council.
I'm sorry, point of clarification, what grant are we speaking of?
NEA, NEA grant proposal from Jonathan Rhodes presented to the city council and the National Endowment for the Arts as our town grant assists Cherokee Village in, uh, master planning. We have already handled the master plan.
So, we did discuss it.
When?
In council.
When?
I believe in multiple council meetings, it was discussed. I'd have to go back specifically, you know, certainly Councilman Christa Pete was on city council at that time. Uh, I believe Ms. Rowland was on city council at that time. We voted that, and Mr. Martin, since you do promote or request for long-range planning to occur, it was a three-party participation that this council did vote for. We took, took a, a vote on it as to whether or not to participate. And SID was going to participate, American Land was going to participate, and the city was going to participate, up to the $25,000 that you're seeing there. But there, you know, there was no grant that ever came to fruition. So, part of the reason why it was never listed was because no progress was made on the grant in those years that you mentioned. Um, I'd have to go look and see whether or not a grant was actually received. And if it was received, how the funds were spent. But, you know, you're pulling out, and I'm sorry, you've got some notes there that you're, you're reading.
Do you have the minutes?
No, you have minutes, but I'm not, I'm not seeing the same minutes. So, if you want to have a copy of those, uh, for all council to sit there and say, it was a grant proposal.
Correct, and it was also done in 2018, and 2018, we missed it. In 2019, we voted again.
Okay, just type, type.
And in 2020, there was not in the budget. In 2021, it was not in the budget. So, therefore, money was spent again that was not budgeted.
Okay, just for a moment, you've already introduced your issue.
Correct.
Let me address that. So, let me read the minutes. So, the NEA grant proposal, Jonathan Rhodes made a presentation to city council. And again, I'd have to go back to the date, this would have been, this would have been 2019.
Correct.
Okay, so Mr. Rhodes presented to city council, the National Endowment for the Arts, our town grant to assist Cherokee Village in master planning. There's a timeline to complete and submit the application as of August 20th of 2019. The grant is for $75,000 for a one-for-one match of cash and in-kind funding from the applicant. This is the same as what council approved at the August 16th, 2018 meeting.
Correct.
Council was being asked to consider reapplication as we did not receive last year's grant. Motion was made by council member Smith, seconded by myself, to resolve to commit the, to grant application and participate in a one-third partnership share, $25,000 maximum in the National Endowment for Arts, our town grant. After motion discussion, roll call vote failed. Okay, council members Adams, Christa Pete, Woods were for it. Council members Covington, Rupert, Smith, and Thompson against. Mayor Stokes voted for the majority of eight votes, motion passed. Okay?
But if you ask the lawyer who isn't here, it takes six votes to pass it. You have to have the majority of the whole.
I understand, okay, but the question is whether or not the grant ever came about. And to my knowledge, the grant was never received.
Okay, then why did we pay $39,000?
It was received.
What day was it received on? What day was it received on?
January 11th, 14th, or 11th, 4th, 21. And we got $4,8935 on 6th, 14th, and 21. And then we got another grant, too, $11,000, $12,000, $13,000, Mr. Smith.
But, but my question is, was that the NEA grant?
Yes.
Yes.
For long-range planning? Okay, so, so I, I'm, I'm trying to question whether or not the grant we received was specifically what was applied for, because there's a lot of grants that we are ongoing in an effort to receive.
I understood it as after, after the time that it was an in and out. We'd get the bills from Brinson, she'd confirm the money was there, the check would be written, and it would be done. So, it wasn't the lump sum money, the invoice, it was as things occurred in and out. Am I remembering correctly?
Yeah, enough.
So, if this happened in 2019, and now we start getting money in 2021, to the best of your knowledge, that's, that's when things start happening?
Because of COVID.
Yeah, COVID.
Well, a lot of things happened between 2019 and 2021. There was a lawsuit that came, and we got bit with. And SID isn't spending money like they used to spend money. So, are they part of this third, that was never brought in front of council and council was not, council did not address it. All of a sudden, in 2022 of August of 2022, $39,664.25 was spent. Therefore, I'm saying that either way, even if the 25 was approved, we still spent money without coming in front of council and having council deal with it. That's my whole problem.
So, my question to you, Mr. Martin, is can we determine the breakdown on the $39,000 that you're bringing up? Because you're just bringing up lump sum numbers.
That's what the paperwork says. That's what I was given.
But there's no details to that. There is no, there's not a single dollar of detail to try to find out whether or not those tie together.
Here, here you bring it down.
That's everything that we got on that grant and everything that the checks we gave off of the grant. They said was canceled because for some time or another, they got done, but we never did get cash. So, that's what's in the account right now.
So, we paid out money to American Land Company?
No, that was third part of the grant.
That's what they paid.
So, this is money coming in?
Yes.
This money coming in, yes.
And the black is the money going out?
That's parentheses, is money going out. Misty, you might have to come and help me. And y'all, I mean, this was all done before I got here.
Yeah, it was all done before I got here.
And it says, city donation of $25,000 right here.
Yes, that was what was in that, uh...
So, then shouldn't something show someplace about money coming in from these people?
NEA treasurer, $38,000 in. NEA treasurer, $4,800 in. So, when you sit back here and you look at this...
That's, that's the wrong year. You're 22.
You're 22.
This is 21.
This is 2021. You're comparing the wrong year to...
Then where did this money go out? When, when did that amount go out?
Just a few months ago.
So, we spent $39,664.25 on the 8th, uh, on, in August of this year.
This is just February, not this year, last year.
It was that expanding bill whenever I started, you know what I'm talking about, don't you? Yeah, I do.
But what specifically is he referencing?
Jonathan had to come in. And then we even had Jonathan to come in and talk to Stephen. We had to get the paperwork.
Yeah, and they're actually, I mean, part of that is they're actually fixing to close it down because that's what he was telling me, that COVID's held them out a couple of years.
Right, and the mayor's at March that it's supposed to be done with. He told us the, the end of, well, I get him excited.
I was thinking it was May, it was March or May.
And if we hadn't paid what we, what we were owed, it was putting us off to...
Yeah, basically, we'd be...
We wouldn't get the rest of...
Basically, you'd be throwing money away if we didn't finish, if they didn't finish paying.
We wouldn't have been throwing money away because we're throwing money away in the first place because we already have a master plan. There's one sitting in the office over there, 2010, master plan, Cherokee Village, and nobody from this council probably even knows it exists.
Well, I understand there's one from 2010, but do you think there's been some updates since 2010? This is 2023, this is 13 years ago.
Has anybody done anything with the 2010 one? No, there's a whole bunch of references and stuff of things we should be doing. It hasn't been looked at, and this, I don't know where this money's going, and I don't know what these other two entities are doing.
Mr. Martin, I mean, not to...
All, the whole thing is, is money to spend.
I'm speaking.
Yes, you are.
Let me get done speaking and then it's your turn. I'm sure, I mean, I'm speaking of the past mayor, but I am sure he didn't spend whatever you're saying, $38,000 without the council's approval. Somewhere, it's there.
Well...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that.
I've recorded every meeting but two for the last 18 years.
I understand.
Two of them I missed. One of them had to be the meeting that this happened at.
And you...
So, I don't have this meeting to go by, but I have the ones after that.
So, here's also, here's...
And I've been sitting in this room every year, and I can tell you...
Here's also where I want to go with this.
Go, go ahead.
You're talking about 2018, you're talking about 2019, you're talking about 2020. This is, this is the new year, we're starting new. We're hashing stuff that's been...
We're hashing stuff out about the 2022, um, December that wasn't, financials that weren't approved. That's why we're here, correct, everybody?
No, we're here because you brought...
That's the reason it was. And I said at that meeting that money has been spent that the council didn't approve of.
That's a false statement.
How would that...
That is an uninformed, false statement, and I can't say it any clearer.
That's what the data was given to me by the treasurer, and now you're having the treasurer redo things, and she's got notes here. Well, I took the NEA grant out of this, this new one so that you don't have it in there.
Mr. Martin, Mr. Martin. Mr. Martin, I'm trying to be civil.
I'm trying to be civil too, I'm confused.
If you're saying that, you're coming dangerously close to making accusations of crime. And if, and if you're going to make an accusation of a crime in a public setting, in a public forum, on camera, you had better have, without, beyond a shadow of a doubt, proof, because that can be taken as slander.
This is the paperwork I have put in front of me by the treasurer. And, and this is what I saw at last month's meeting, and that's what I asked about. There was $105,000 when I added up the last month's paperwork that I couldn't account for, that I was told was an overage on all these different budgets. And I only added, I didn't, I didn't add anything from the other big grant we have, I just added the departments. So, I added them all up and I come up with $105,000 that the council did not approve of. Because if they would have approved of, then the budget would have been changed and it would have been addressed. And, and here is an example of it.
And you're holding, you're holding this...
Point of order, please, Mr. Mayor, point of order. We are here tonight because Mr. Martin and Mr. Smith spent 45 minutes in the previous council meeting when they could have asked for the issue to be tabled in two minutes' time and we would have been done. I'm not going to sit here for another 45 minutes tonight. We have asked for the financials to be reviewed. I would like to have the information from the city staff as far as the opportunity that they had to go back and reconcile this and not sit here for another 45-minute lecture by Mr. Martin, or anyone else for that matter. We're here tonight because we requested a reconciliation to be done. So, can we hear about the reconciliation and not about three years ago, five years ago, four years ago? But can we hear on the agenda what is on the agenda for this evening?
This is on the agenda because this is part of what I talked about at that last meeting, that money was spent without the council.
Let me, let me...
That is a, for a second time, it's a false...
Mr. Thompson, y'all, hold on a second. Let me ask a very simple question. Peter, are you, just help me understand, are you saying that council never vote, now let me finish, never voted to spend the grant money? Or are you saying that we never revisited to put it actually through the budget because it was done under a resolution and not an ordinance?
There, there are a number of different things, and the grant is just part of it. I can go through and start adding up all the little brackets this time that the treasurer told me were overages in different departments. We have $46,000 now that was, was spent but not approved by the city council, supposedly in the street department. But last month, it was only $16,000. So, how does that change? And why is it changing? And who's doing the changing?
Okay, let me, let me say fucking hell here. Okay, Peter, Peter, look at me.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, when, when the budget is done, okay? Keep in mind, it's projected budget, okay? And that's followed all throughout the year. When you start getting to the end of the year, that's when departments look at that budget. Gas may have been more, it may have been less, okay? So, therefore, that's when you've got to do your housekeeping and you've got to change that budget. It's a living, breathing budget to a certain point. Because at the beginning of the year, we say, basically, we're not going to go over any of this. Now, you can make changes throughout your department.
Correct.
Take from gas and put it on new brakes, something like that. But then you've got December. When December comes, it's just like with all of our home budgets. That's when those final bills come in, and you're not going to see that before the close on the documentation, on the close of December 31st. So, you have to look at it like the budget that you were talking about. When we passed that budget, we passed it in mind that we were going to fall short 200 and whatever it was, $1,000, okay? And that we knew we were going to have to take that from our reserve. It ended up being 105 because the due diligence, due diligence of our department heads on not spending what we thought we were going to have to spend. So, our shortfall was not as bad as we originally projected. So, the reason why you're seeing what you think are discrepancies, now I'm not talking about the details, I'm talking about the overall budget, is because it's a living, breathing document. It moves and grows as we go throughout the year.
And then when Alderman Martin in July said, when are we going to review and go through this budget and reset it? The mayor at the time says, we're going to do it at the end of the year. So, again, there was a whole bunch of money spent. I have added up $105,000. It's not $10,000, it's not $6,000, it's a big chunk of change that the council did not approve of or did not add to the budgets before December.
Okay, you're talking about different things.
That means the department head, the department head should say, hey, I can't spend this because it's not in the budget for me to spend.
When he gets off his soapbox, let me know, I'm going to get a drink of water.
Oh, ready.
Okay, Peter, it was, it was approved to spend. At the beginning of the year, that year, it wasn't. More than that was actually approved to spend, they just didn't spend it all. So, we knew we were going to have a shortfall, and it ended up not being the 207,000, it ended up only being 105,000. Now, what you're talking about on the back end of that is a procedural issue. If this council and the previous mayor sat here and said, we're going to revisit this in December, we should have absolutely done that. Shame on everybody here, except for people who are new. So, if it's a procedural issue, then what we have to do as council members, when that kind of statement is made, somebody's got to put it in their head, okay, we need to bring this back up and we start getting closer to time. I agree with you on that. When we got into our shortfall last year, this council also sat there and said, as the previous mayor did, that we were going to wait till spring and take another look. Did we do that? We didn't. We didn't. All we can do now is look at the procedures, and if we need to get tighter on our procedures, then it's our obligation to sit here and do that. You can be the first one and I'll be the second one to start reminding us that we make these statements in council and we need to stay on top of it. Or set a meeting down the road and say, we're going to do a special meeting to do it and put it on the calendar, and then everybody knows in three months, we've got a special meeting and this is what we're doing. That would probably be the best way. So, you've got a budget issue, but the procedural issue, I agree with you, we need to get tighter on our procedures. That's just like I still have a question about when we did approve the NWA or NEA grant, we did it by resolution. It is still kind of floating out there, what, what is the actual law when we do resolution? Most of our resolutions, when it comes January, we have to reevaluate those resolutions and we have to vote on them. If we did that by resolution, then in my mind, when each year came along until that money was spent, we should have absolutely revoted on that resolution. We've got a new council, new council mayor said, we're not interested in spending that grant money, we're not interested in the grant anymore. And they could have voted to turn it down. So, that's another thing, this council needs to get better at not using resolutions as much and putting them in ordinances. Ordnance have more teeth, resolutions do not. So, it's a procedural issue. So, my suggestion is you make a list of the procedural issues you would like to see this council either change or tighten up on, and we can visit that at our next special meeting, and everybody can go from there. Sorry, that was long-winded, apologize.
You actually answered the question.
Yep, I agree. So, we ready to move on?
Go ahead.
I don't even know where we're at now.
I did have this, I'd like to bring it up when we get a chance. Got to sit around. It's actually budget-related.
You make the motion, wasn't there a motion made? Did we finish with that motion earlier?
No, we did, we did a motion.
You motioned something, right?
I, I didn't make a motion, I started in, I started in section two, administration of the agenda.
Yep.
That's, that's all, was, was discussion.
Yep, it was open. Can we go, we can go through these one by one or all together? I think that's where I left off. Got a little breather there. All right, since we went through the NEA budget, it actually wasn't on the agenda. I'm kind of lost where we need to go now. Guess we can just start, uh... Do we have a, do we have a motion to pass the financials?
Thompson, is that what you're motioning for?
I'd like to talk about this before.
Okay.
Because it says financial related.
Yeah, Mr. Tatum has an issue he wants to bring up.
Okay, I sent everybody a piece of paper around here. If I'm reading this correctly, and I just had the treasurer looking up, we're paying the district clerk $28,080 a year. According to Arkansas Code, and they're listed right there, if I'm not mistaken the way I'm reading this, the county is responsible for paying half of her salary. If that's correct, that's $14,000 that the city would have to put into something else.
Yeah, it says typically. I know Cherokee always has...
But it's the clerk that's doing court in Cherokee, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, doing Cherokee court.
But, but since, since they are doing court here, that's why it's coming, you see things coming out of our budget instead of the county's budget. If we no longer had court here, then it would be the county paying for it.
It was set up that way when court was set up for Cherokee Village, yes.
Because it's a Cherokee, because they have court here.
It was all established when court was originally set up for, for here. And the, what the court brings in, like court kind of takes care of itself, you have to think of it that way.
Yeah, I see.
Well, I just think it's maybe something the budget committee can look into because if there's a way that we can get the county to pay that half, that's another $14,000 we can throw into something else.
Yeah, it can be, it can be a question that can be asked. I don't care to ask the question and I can get an answer. Uh, well, where's page one? Do you want, Mr., Ms. Clerk, want to go, go through them individually, one by one? The fund balance, page one?
Go through down four.
Just see if we have any discussion or questions on anything.
Number one, is the fund balance? Is there any discussion?
No. I mean, just a little bit of what we went... I mean, just a little bit of what we went through when we was trying, and this be of interest to Mr. Martin, but what we went through when we was trying to take the budget and go through it and see where a lot of the line items were out of line, and where some of the budgets was out of line, which most of the departments did really good about staying, the place department was good about staying under budget, and, and most of the departments good about staying under budget. Now, I heard a question about the street department being over budget on salaries. I discussed that at length with Joey, the street superintendent, the treasurer, Deanna. We went, we went through everybody's, the pay stubs, what was approved, and every, all the employees. And we come up with the number that's, that's on the budget, the two-forty-two number, the one that's forty-two over, it's forty-two thousand over budget. Well, I mean, the numbers don't lie. The employees get paid what they get paid, and their benefits are what they get paid. Part of what happened last year is, is that you had a few months in there when Mr. Thomas was in there. I'm not going to butcher pronouncing his last name, but Thomas was in there. So that kind of throwed it out. And then you had a partial year where they had a part-time employee that was in there that eventually after Thomas had left, that they, he went full-time. So that may have been some of the discrepancies. Joey actually had spoken with Thomas, and I don't want to be out of line in saying this, but Thomas said, if I'm right, Joey, correct me, he'd said something about he, he may have under budgeted. And he said he may not have thought about it, and he under budgeted because he wasn't thinking about his salary or part-time salary coming out of that budget. So that's, that's where that discrepancy come in. And then, but when you, when you get down to the final total, they're actually not, that, not, they're not out of line. They're not that far out of line. I mean, you're not, Joey, what is it, you're, it's not that much? And this is like Ms. Rowland saying, when you talk about the total budget for the whole year, not, not picking line items, but the total budget for what it was, for what was actually budgeted and what was actually spent.
Forty-nine. If I read it correctly, forty-nine thousand or something like that.
Yeah, well, the forty-two of it is the salaries. So, it's all about seven thousand is what, the way I understand it. Because I mean, like I said, the salaries, they are what they are. Uh, so, okay, we can keep going.
Number two is the general from the administration, and there are two pages to that.
So I have a question.
Go ahead.
Specifically on these pages, and again, I'm more of a finance background than accounting background, especially municipal accounting. But when you look at administration, revenue came in, under revenue, and this is on page, I guess that, page one of fifteen. So revenue came in at about one-point-eight-five million. The budget was one-point-six-three million. So we had, in my mind, positive revenue. And that column is, is listed as a variance. Where I do business, if you have more revenue than what you planned on, that should be a positive variance instead of a negative variance. So, again, not understanding municipal accounting, how do we go from, if we got more revenue than what we planned, how does that show up on that page as a negative? Can someone help me with that?
I've had those arguments before in previous seats, and it's because it's on the revenue side of the budget, that's how it's reflected. That's how, it's part of me, it's just a matter of fact that I'm municipal accounting lawyer. We're talking about revenue versus expense.
It's a proactive loss statement. Positives are your expenses, your negatives are your income. So the more negative in an income column, higher your overages.
Okay, so, so let's go to page two then, because if you look at expenses, and the budget was actually higher than what we incurred, the two-twenty-seven versus the two-fourteen, and that's shown as a positive number. So if expenses ended up being less than the annual budget.
No, it was over by twelve thousand now, because it's a positive number.
Right here on page two, two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, and I-
Actual budget was twelve thousand.
The, the budgeted, budgeted expenses were two-twenty-seven, but the year-to-date actual came in at two-fourteen. And that's shown as a positive number. And, and I would think logically that follows that, yeah, it's a positive number because our, the expenses in administration were less than what the budgeted expenses were. But you go back up to the revenue side of it, and you're saying that, no, it's a P and L statement, and rather than annual budget, and to me, having more revenue than what we budgeted for should be a positive number.
It's saying that we're, we've got that much more than what we budgeted for. That's-
So, so why isn't that a positive number rather than a negative number?
I think it's just saying it's a diff, it's, it's different than what we, I don't, I don't know. It's different than what we budgeted.
Well, so, so is the expense side different than what we budgeted, but you show less expenses than what we budgeted as a positive number, but less, but more revenue than what we budgeted as a negative number. And that doesn't reconcile in my mind.
You're dealing with debits and credits, and your debit is your positive number as an expense. Your credit is your positive number on an income side. So the more credit you have within brackets is better. The higher the number is in your expense side, your debit shows you got more expenses. I, I know, it's, it's not-
Well, I mean, are you trying to show a budget? Are you trying to show an income statement? Are you trying to show a P and L? Or are we mixing all of those?
All of them.
Maybe that's why I'm so confused.
And to Mr. Martin, I have to apologize.
Oh, you're okay.
Because, because quite frankly, it doesn't logically flow.
You're saying the same thing I did, but with income instead of expense. You're doing the same exact-
Well, but, but, and it's also a little bit different connotation because, because again, I'm not implying that anybody spent money that wasn't authorized. I'm not implying that anybody has misappropriated anything. What I am saying is that the financial statements are difficult to follow logically. And to me, accounting is fundamentally logical. And these are not a logical flow.
I agree.
So we have a new councilman now. And she has background in QuickBooks and so forth. We have, Mr. Hanchu has certainly helped out on the budget side with Excel spreadsheet. And I would propose that we might want to consider a more logical approach to the financial statements of this community. Whoever is running the ship, because I'm seeing three different people offer input. And I'm all for cross-training in deference to Ms. Rowland, but somebody's got to take a singular responsibility for this. Single person responsible for this. I don't care who inputs it, whether it's department heads or whatever, but I think we have uncovered at this point, or at least we've discussed greatly at this point, the fact that these are challenging at best for the council, let alone the public, to follow. And so there's got to be a concerted effort to consolidate the information, clarify the information, and publish it in a straightforward manner. Not a co-mingling of a P and L and an income statement and a balance sheet. Those are shown in any other entity as separate, not co-mingled.
The balance sheet's not there. So, yeah, sure, but a P and L and an income statement are basically one and the same.
So we need to make a decision how we're going to logically present these to council so that there's not confusion by anyone. And I mean, my background's in finance. I read financial statements daily. And these are a challenge to follow. Now, what Mr. Martin and what this council put forward as a resolution was to make sure that any discrepancies, whether we were carrying something as a contribution and not counting that in revenue, and then subsequently counting it in expense item, that's what my understanding was, we were coming in here this evening. But I think that there is a more base issue that we have got to find a better way to present our financials more accurately and logically to this council and to the community. Is that fair, Mr. Mayor? So, my question is, is there anything after the treasurer, after city personnel have gotten through and looked at this, and whether department heads have evaluated these financials, is there anything that is unaccounted for at this point? Yes or no? Simple answer, is there anything unaccounted for, and I'm asking this of current city employees? Do you feel like there's anything unaccounted for? Do you feel like everything is fully reconciled? So at this point, we don't have anything other than a project that I believe needs to be undertaken on the part of the mayor and the city employees, is to come up with a better way of presenting financials to this council that provides greater clarity and where we can tie across and make sense. Maybe we don't extract it pieces out of the financial system that is there. I realize you've got to report to the state. I realize that we've got to be able to have an audit, which we've not failed. If I'm correct, we haven't failed an audit in at least the last eight years. Is that correct?
We've had our hands slapped a bunch of times. But we didn't fail it.
We have been corrected on, you know, or asked for additional details. We have not had our hands slapped, to quote Mr. Martin.
Then why did we have to-
We are up to date when it comes to the audit. We passed this last audit, and there were some things that the treasurer and I had to correct to make that happen, and we've done that.
Did those corrections involve any misappropriation or any, any unapproved spending?
No. We got this for twenty, twenty-eight, ten million.
Okay, so the, so the auditor might have some bookkeeping issues in terms of where something should go or the flow of it, but there was, there's never been a question about misappropriation or unauthorized spending.
No.
Mr. Martin, I hope that your, your concerns in that respect are then addressed.
I think when you stepped out, we covered that his problem was a procedural issue, not that he was saying there were misappropriated funds. So that, I think that is pretty much quashed. But I do have a question.
Well, and, and excuse me, Ms. Rowland, but if it's quashed, then since you're presenting that, then is it possible that Mr. Martin can then address his questions and commentary to the process and not give an impression to the public? Because I have had numerous calls from the public as to whether or not city council is misappropriating or spending money in unauthorized fashion, or that there's problems with the financials. And that is absolutely a result of people quoting Mr. Martin at the last council meeting and previous council meetings. I don't bemoan him, I don't object to anybody raising the issue and questioning the process. But the commentary has got to stay focused on that.
Mr. Mayor, can we get back on task?
Well, I think Mr. Martin was addressed just now. I think he should answer.
It confused you, it confused me a lot more.
But it's a process.
So, so what I would strongly suggest is the council, sit down, have one of those working meetings that I'm not invited to because I'm working, and come up with a procedure, I've asked several times, and come up with a procedure of how this stuff works. And I think we should also come up with a procedure of what everybody's job is because they honestly don't know and are making it up as they go along, because from one mayor to the next, it changes.
But it's a process issue, and that, Mr. Martin, is what I'm asking you to do, to agree to in this meeting, that if you have a process question, then address the question.
I will try to in the future to contact you with my questions so that you have a heads-up on it.
Contact the mayor.
I can contact the mayor then too.
He is the chief executive officer of this community.
If, but he's not the one that seems to have a problem with what I'm saying, you are. So I wanted to make sure that you understood what I was saying prior to the meeting. And, and it was just the data I got and how I read the data led me to a conclusion. So if the data is at fault, or the process is at fault, then the conclusion is false, correct?
Correct.
There we go.
All right, let's move on. Sounds good. Next.
Was there a motion in there, in that, to get a new format?
There was no second yet, so.
I didn't hear a first motion.
I didn't hear much.
The motion was that the council at a working meeting, sit down and set up a format that they follow so that we can understand it and we think the public can understand it, with the people involved in it.
But I thought Mr. Thompson had one before you.
Oh, did you have a motion?
My, my motion is simply that the mayor get with the city employees and figure out, possibly with the concurrence of our new council member and her experience with financial statements, and possibly with Mr. Hanch, that to work on those resources. Again, our, our legal responsibilities as council members starts and ends with that gavel. That is Arkansas municipal code. None of us has a right to dictate how the task is done or completed by an employee. I'm making a motion to request the mayor to marshal the resources, employees, as well as members of the community that are, you know, address, can address this, to seek to get a better format for the financials that are brought forward to council.
Motion made by Mr. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Tatum. All those in favor?
Hold it. We're still in discussion.
We have been for forty-eight minutes.
Well, but he made the motion, there's the second, and now it's discussion. And, and here, here lies the problem with that statement. The council has the ability, as a council, as a group of eight people, to set policy. And that could be policy that is being set. And since it involves a lot of the council members, then they should have the opportunity to sit down and set that policy. There's a lot of policies that should be set by council and not necessarily by the administration, because each administration changes it.
What policy specifically would you be referring to in this situation?
Well, in this particular instance, like he was saying about setting up the finances. So it's easy for us to understand, and when we put them up on the internet, it's easy for them to understand. Because if we all have our input, then all of our concerns are addressed, if you have a concern. But if we're leaving it to people that are not in this group, then it's a policy that the administration's going to set that is not something that flows from these four years to the next four years to the next four years, unless it's in an ordinance form.
Peter, are you saying you would like the mayor and his secretary, all that kind of stuff, do you want them to come up with several different ways?
No.
No, but hold on, let me finish. Are you saying, do you want him to come up with several different formats for the budget and let the, the city council approve which one we're using? Is that what you want to do?
The city council can set policy. And the city council should be able to set the policy of how this information is put out to us and the public.
That's what I just- That's what I just.
No, you didn't say the city council. You said the mayor and the people in the office.
Yes, I said, does he want to come up with several different formats and bring them to the council and let the council approve which one we want at the city council and to go to the public?
We're just, like he says, spinning our wheels and discussing this, because I just corrected what you said, that the council can, the council could do this, and you said that the council could not.
I'm not understanding it, that's the way I understood you were saying.
I want the council.
How can we set a policy if we don't know what we're going to use?
I think the mayor would work with the city employees. They would come up with what we're asking, and then all it has to do is be put in the form of an ordinance. A council member needs to sponsor that ordinance. It would come before us, we would discuss it and vote it yes or vote it no. And Mayor, do you agree that that's what's going to be done?
Yes.
There you go.
There you go. Okay, we're done.
Before you can vote, can you please clarify what this motion is?
We're going to have to put it in a better form. So, Mr. Thompson's motion is for...
I don't need to see if there's any systems.
To see if there's any.
The mayor and the city employees, along with any consulting that they want to do to make sure that the financial statements that are presented to council and the city concur with the software that the city is currently operating with, in full compliance with the state auditor, and come up with a format that is straightforward and easily followed by not only council, but members of the public. That's it in a nutshell.
Does this come for council for approval, or what?
I think if we're going to change the format of these financial statements, yes, sir, I would agree with you. It has to come up with council. They're like any other committee or a project group. They're going to go work the issue and come up with a solution and present it to council for approval.
I think that's what Mr. Martin was trying to say, wasn't he?
A little bit confused right now, but okay.
To be put in the form of an ordinance, because that way it is carried out from now on. The council would have to go back and revisit up ordinance and either do away with it or present changes, but an ordinance is solid. So, therefore, if, goodness forbid, our current mayor said, forget y'all, and I quit, and we had to put somebody else in there, if that person doesn't immediately come in and go, I don't like how you're doing it, I want to do it a different way, there's an ordinance to follow. And therefore, it puts it back into the place where it should be, which is council. So, all you have to do is do what Mr. Thompson said and add to be put in the form of our ordinance to be presented to council.
I'm with that right now. I'm just, right now, I'm just taking that and that uniform system that I can use.
There you go.
So, but yes, I think I have it. Would you like roll call?
As discussion ended?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Clerk.
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rollins?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Tatum?
Yes.
Heffley?
Yes.
Motion passed.
So, where do we make it to?
I think we're on the second sheet of the financials now.
We're on animal control.
Animal control.
There are two pages.
I have one question on this, if not too high schoolish for some people. We've got the Valpor trust here in our general ledger. How are we going to distinguish how that's being spent? When we had a tornado fund, we actually had a page that was kind of set out for that, so we knew what our expenses were coming down. Well, we plan on doing the same thing for the animal center.
Yes. To my knowledge, there was instructions in the file that states.
We have it. We have a paper on Valpor.
Yeah, there's.
They're separable.
It's in the financials and I just don't see it, or?
Yes, it's in the financials.
What page are we looking at?
Well, it might be in the 23rd. I don't know. I know, and how about the, how can we spend?
Yeah, because remember, it's four pages long, isn't it? Is it in 22 or 23, when we done that Valpor trust? Because whenever I print it off in my printer, it prints off on four pages. I was just wondering what year it started, I mean, what month?
Oh, what month?
I know it got in the January.
Yeah, it's, it's off.
I don't think there's any in tonight's packet, but there is, they are in January.
Okay, so we've got some way of tracking this.
Yeah.
And it's got the breakdown of all the expressions.
Okay, that's my other question.
Okay. So, next be the ARPA?
Next would be the ARPA. There's one page.
Mr. Smith, is the day ever finished all the renovations and all the paperwork out there, the animal control, the fencing, and everything?
We got a certain amount of that done, but that was, that did not fall under this fund.
No, I'm just asking. It crossed my mind, we were going to, we hadn't talked about it in a long time, I was just asking.
We had a budget amount last year for buildings and maintenance of 9,000, and I think we went $127 over that when it was closing out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, Mr.
So, to address part of Mr. Tatum's question, as was mentioned earlier, the Valpor contribution was their gift to the animal shelter, approximately $70,000. Additional gift from another trust, Los Mox Trust, that was received by the city in January, a little over $84,000. Both of those requests came with a general list of, well, the general guideline is that they'd be spent for capital improvements. So, the mayor, former mayor and his wife, Mr. and Mrs. Stokes, met with the trustees, showed them the facility, showed them some of the priority items, like fencing. The cat house is basically in such a state of disrepair that it needs to be just razed and replaced. Insulation of the doghouse, heat and air systems, you know, generally those capital improvements. Their desire was, both trustees, both trustees, and I worked with the original grantors of the trust over a period of, in excess of 20 years, their desire was that it was not going to be used for salaries, for general operating, that it was specifically for capital improvements that the city was unable to address the needs for the animals out there. So, my understanding is Mr. and Mrs. Stokes are documenting all of those, and you'll probably, I would see that there's, I would suspect that there's going to be a separate reconciliation of all of those receipts and expenditures, because that's really donated money, and it's not a dollar of taxpayer money.
Moving on to buildings and grounds, number five.
We've got one page.
And again, I have the same question here, and hopefully it will be, get clarified, because you see revenue that come in, came in significantly above budget, because we had unplanned insurance that occurred, namely, I would think the roof, if Mr. Akers, I see him nodding out there, I would assume that the bulk of this was the roof of City Hall, and then the land sale is where the highway department has paid us for that piece of land. Once again, I think it's be more helpful for the public to see that that number be a positive number in whatever future presentation, because that's a plus.
It is. That's something that I should, when we was having our discussion earlier, and it's been a little bit a learning curve for me to get used to dealing with city businesses, that in the revenue line, the bracketed money is actually, you know, when you see the brackets and you think it's a negative, in the revenue line, that's actually a positive. It doesn't become negative until it gets in the expense line.
Okay. And possibly, we could break it out. I don't know, in your preparation and with the city employees working on this, possibly you can break it out as, or make notes below and say, this is a positive for the city. It's not a negative. Because not everybody out there in the public understands the financial system of the city or preparation of financial statements.
Even on the community service, we add them six. One page. And then we have item eight is the district court. Item 10 is planning and zoning. And there again, I'll go with, one of the reasons that they was more out of budget is because of some of the money that was paid to Thomas that was owed in his vacation and comp time that they paid out last year, and then with the hiring of Mr. Akers is where that come in at.
Can I ask, I got a question on that. We have a uniform expense down here. I've never seen anybody in planning and zoning uniform.
I guess that, as for the mats?
For the what?
Matty. Adorn mats.
It's by a uniform company, right?
Yeah, the uniform company.
Oh, yeah. Yes, the ones we had, I mean, there's the pants and the boots and the shirts.
Yeah, I just wondered, because I've never seen anybody in uniforms.
We had a model employee last year who, well, yeah, who was a model with us, and then I would have another one. So, he did uniforms, so he did fit, he had less than what I expected. I would buy him.
I didn't know that, just, I've seen that, and I've never seen the two of you in uniforms, so I was like, where is that coming from?
Yeah, somewhere, I mean, some shirts, one less.
No issue, I was just curious about that.
All right. Item 11 is the police department. Item 12 is the police auxiliary fund. Item 13 is the street fund. Item 15 is the end of the year, state of the city for 2022, total revenue and expenditures. Item 16 is the Arkansas treasurer's report 2022, be the total sales tax collected for the year for 2022. And then the next is item 17, which is street department Arkansas treasurer, which is total amount of money received for Arkansas, the street turnback, the street fund. So, that's all we, we got any discussion on any of them? Any further discussion? Good to go. Now, looking for a motion to pass the financials with corrections?
And make a motion to pass with corrections.
Sir. Heffley, Mr. Heffley made the motion to pass financials with corrections and seconded by Mr. Tatum. As Mr. Martin says, discussion?
Any more?
Any more? All in favor?
I think we need a roll call vote.
Hey, there you go. Ms. Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes.
Heffley?
Yes.
Ishmael?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Martin?
abstained.
Yes.
Harrison?
Abstained.
We have four yeses, two no's, and two abstains. We have four, and Mr. Smith, yes, he abstained, or he said no?
No, he voted no.
Yeah, he voted no.
Correct.
Mr. Martin?
I have four yeses. One, two, no, I have five yeses, okay? Five yeses, one no, and two abstaining.
Okay.
Did you say no or abstain?
Abstain.
What did you say?
I thought it was yes.
Okay, here, sorry.
All right. Moving on to the section two, the mayor's and clerk's salary. Which any changes to the mayor and clerk's salary have to be reflected in the budget, the finalized budget.
I have, I have an item that I would like to put before council in this area. I know that it was requested that it be put on the agenda, but going to the municipal league of Arkansas, and under Q and A for the municipal league attorneys, and this falls under the general guideline of salaries specifically, and this question was put, this is under elected and appointed officials, and the question was posed to the attorneys of the municipal league, the question was, can the city council members vote to decrease their own salaries or the salaries of other elected officials? And the answer that came back was, generally, a city may not decrease official salaries during the term for which the officials have been elected or appointed. Arkansas code annotated 1442, one-third. annotated 1442113. However, the statute does allow a salary to be decreased during an official's, during an official's term of office at the official's request. Once the official's term expires, the salary for the office is restored to what it was before the decrease. In addition, the statute provides that, quote, salary of an elected official of a city or an incorporated town should be withheld if, A, the elected official is required to hold a professional license or registration as a qualification of his or her position, B, the elected official's professional license or registration is suspended. Therefore, under the guidelines laid out by the Arkansas municipal league, I believe this council acted inappropriately in moving forward into the current fiscal year with a salary of both positions reduced to 16,000, and that this clearly states that it should be reinstated. So my question was, what was the mayor's salary at the end of the previous mayor's term? Approximately, you don't have to get real close, but I would put that to anyone.
Being a treasurer.
Can I go look?
Currently present.
Can I go look, because I don't know. You don't use to fuck your head? I'll go look, I'll be right back.
And if you'd like a copy of this, I'll gladly provide, I'll gladly, while she's doing that, go out and shoot a copy of what was provided to me by municipal league office.
Didn't we reduce the city clerks?
Yes, we did both.
No, we increased the city clerks.
No, we.
We increased the city clerks.
Were both positions set.
Ours was 15.
Okay, so we increased. So we increased it.
But, there is an ordinance that states that the city council can set the mayor's salary prior to an election, which you didn't bother looking up there, but I gave you all the information when we did it, prior to, and you had no problem when there were three people running. Prior to the election, and that's what we did. We had to get it done before the election happened, because you can't do that after the election, so says the documentation that you just read.
No, and I agree with you, but if you go on and read the rest of the municipal league, it says here, once the official's term expires, which it did, the salary for the office is restored to what it was before the decrease.
Unless.
It doesn't say unless here, Mr. Martin.
But was that asked in the question? No, it wasn't. Where, anybody got the big book? I'll look it up for them and show it to them. Because this has happened in several cities already. Hardy tried to screw a mayor out and do it after the election, and there's an ordinance that's.
That's not the question here.
But there's an ordinance that specifically states the council can do that. And that's, we passed a resolution stating that. And at that time, I gave you all the documentation needed to do that.
Well.
So we set the salary for the three people that we didn't know were going to be elected into office at a reasonable rate. We did, we assumed everybody was going to be part-time, which, that's what it was. And it's a hell of a lot more than other mayors, correct? What's the mayor of Highland make?
Highland is not a class one city.
Doesn't make a difference.
Yes, it does.
Doesn't make a difference in my.
Highland doesn't have 24.
Highland has a heck of a lot more going for it than Cherokee at the moment, because they have a whole four lane where they're getting revenue from. What do we have?
So my question is this, what is the state minimum wage?
What's an elected office, minimum wage has got nothing to do with it.
Just a moment. What is the state minimum wage?
Eleven.
Eleven dollars. And if, and my understanding is our current mayor is working full-time, which would be 2,080 hours a week, 40 hours a week.
Are you working for what?
Pretty close. I mean, the only reason I'm not is because I'm trying to.
Make a living.
Yeah, I gotta make a living, so the only reason I'm not is just because some days I've, like, you know, after six hours, I leave.
But at 11 dollars and 80 cents, or 11 dollars an hour, basically, you're looking at, you know, times 2,080, I'd have to run that on a calculator real quick, but you're looking in the, in the low twenties. Previous mayor was paid 21,250. So I believe that until we can get clarification to Mr. Martin's point, as far as ordinance, whether or not that ordinance complies with what was provided by the municipal league to me on this inquiry.
You have to check, ordinances can't supersede state law.
But, I mean, they're quoting Arkansas code.
And I quoted code when we did it.
Well, but again, I would, I would refer the question back to the municipal league as to whether or not, you know, there's a conflict there.
Good idea.
But, in the meantime, we're here to discuss it this evening, and, you know, certainly we're not precluded whether you're referencing your part of the code, Mr. Martin, or the municipal league is correct in their reference back to me on this, and what they, what they emailed to me. So I believe Mr. Tatum asked for that to be added to the agenda, and I would.
Also, it was supposed to have been done before, I asked for it to be done before the new mayor took over, and for some reason it got put off, and that's why I asked for it again, because the new mayor just took office.
Okay, so that's part of the reason why.
Shame on us, but we gotta get it done.
Well, I've got three, I think about three points here, and I'll try to make them quick. First of all, I would like clarification, legal clarification to what you brought, Mr. Thompson, because it says in there, you cannot decrease the mayor's salary, that mayor's salary during their term. I see what that's saying. You can't decrease it on a mayor during that term.
Let me get you a copy of this, because it goes on, it says, once the official's term expires, the salary for the office is restored to what it was before the decrease.
Right, and what I was going to say to that is, the point of clarification that I would like is, if there's an ordinance in place by the city, does that still have the same bearing? Do you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, but I, you know, I would like to address the issue and see if we can at least explore Mr. Tatum's request to have both salaries revisited this evening, and, you know, we can get an answer from the municipal league in between now and the regularly scheduled council meeting for this month. So if we, if we vote this evening, non-binding vote to, at a minimum, restore the salary, which it's a matter of public information, but it would put the mayor back above 21 in terms of previous salary at a minimum, if not consider, you know, whatever someone else would want to bring forward, but this is a working meeting, it's not a full council meeting from the standpoint of a regularly scheduled council meeting. So I think the reconciliation, I would agree with Ms. Rowland, and.
Thank you, sir.
These were Q and As, municipal law revised back in May of 2016, and it's 40 pages of clarification, Q and A clarification, and that is actually from page 10, as you can see, and it's under salaries.
The other thing I was going to say is, if everyone will go back to the meeting and recall it if you need to, when we made that decision, we also agreed that night that a few months in, I think we said quarterly, we were going to revisit this anyway, and if we had a full-time mayor at that time, we were going to bring it up and discuss to up their pay. So we had that on record, that we were going to do that in the first quarter, so, I mean, just saying, I'm not, I'm not trying to deny anybody anything, I'm not trying to stop the discussion, I'm just going back, we just had a discussion while ago about this council saying that they're going to do something, and then, you know, we all get busy and it kind of floats away, so I'm just kind of reminding everyone that we did say that that night.
Is there anywhere in the job description that tells how many hours they're supposed to work, like the city clerk?
According to Mr. Abel, when he addressed that, when you go, when the city council passed the ordinance, you cannot set hours for elected officials. Now, that being said, I, I mean, I can't, I'm not going to speak for anybody other than myself, I may not be here at eight o'clock when the door's open, but I'm here from nine o'clock to two to four every day.
The reason I asked.
Pretty much.
Is we can't, this council, if that's, we cannot differentiate, you being working full-time and part-time at a different salary. We have to set one, one salary, whether you were double-time, whether you were three hours a week. What's called a salary?
Yeah.
Well, we were just discussing, you know, whether he was working full-time or not, and to be fair, if that's not possible, we have to set one salary and stick with it, no matter what the mayor's working 80 hours a week or not. Even though I believe they're grossly, both of them are grossly unpaid, underpaid. A lot of our people in this city were, up until the budget meeting, and, you know, we went through the whole thing with the police department, the fire department, running the burning buildings and stuff for 11 bucks an hour, I think this is our last two stops on salary, and they're grossly underpaid. And just to remind you, we're supposedly $800,000 out of what we normally get, so that's going to come back to bite us one of these days pretty soon, too, so if we keep spending all the, I'm not making any money being a councilman. Other places get paid for being a councilman, or maybe I shouldn't.
The council itself decided that.
I didn't.
That it, well, before us, the council itself decided their council would not get paid the $100 per month.
And the council before they were elected decided they were going to get so much money. All right. So my question is, the budget committee, can we afford to up their salary? And how much, and what's appropriate?
Well, if I may. Yes, we voted when Mayor Stokes first took office, that would be eight years ago, well, now nine years ago. He had, he served two terms. The budget committee met, which was, at the time, Councilman Covington, Council McMahon, and myself, and Mayor Stokes, we reviewed the financials and determined that our department heads were going to have to cut it down to the bone. We cut out subscriptions, we cut out out-of-town training, we, we did everything we could to bring it in line, but the other thing we did was to lead by example, to address Mr. Martin's comment, and that is, that if we were going to ask our city employees to watch every dime, then we needed to do likewise. And so we brought it as a proposal to the council, and that would be in 2014, I believe, January 14. Council agreed that the typical, if you will, and I understand that there are other communities that pay approximately $100 per meeting per council, including the mayor, so that was $900 a month, times 12 gets you up over 10 grand. It was chosen as a path to lead by example and provide that for additional room within the budget. And I believe that moving the mayor and the clerk, you know, to a different level, but certainly above the 16, I believe that because council continues to not be reimbursed, and annually, that 10,000 plus, I'd have to work the numbers, whatever that is, 900 times 12, 10-8? My high school math teacher would regret. Can't even run a calculator properly. 10-8, thank you. I believe that there's room within the budget, you know, to pay the mayor and/or city clerk however you want to address this, if you want to do it separately or individually. You know, certainly, we're going to have to be diligent and pursue other avenues of revenue. The whole commentary that's been made by other people, attracting other businesses, pursuing whatever state and federal funding, you know, is available, and at some point, the city is going to have to face whether or not, you know, they're willing to pay an additional, you know, a higher level of sales tax, but that's for another evening.
I just think we got to come up with, one way or the other, we've got to come up with an amount, stick with it. But we got to be able to attract people to do it, I mean, if the city clerk, was it 15,000 you're making now? We know what the mayor's making, as was asked, but 15,000, how many people are going to apply for that position? It's an elected position. That's what I was saying, how many people are going to apply for it to get on the ballot to work a job that's sometime 40 hours a week for 15,000 a year? And we need qualified people in that position. Then maybe we should change the form of government and have a city manager instead of have a mayor, and that might help a lot of our problems. But that's a whole nother subject.
Totally different conversation.
But that's, you're talking about, you're talking about people responsible, getting people to do the right thing, that's another form of government that can be had, that can change the world.
As far as a recommendation to make a vote tonight, I mean, we have a regular stated meeting in like 10 days, so I don't see a need to make any votes tonight, because you have, we have two things here that seem to be conflicting. So my suggestion is get clarification, present that at the regular stated meeting, and then we can make a decision on whether or not to make a vote.
Anybody on council can make a motion to do that, anybody, at any time can make that motion. Let me add something to that, if you're going to make a motion to do that, let's have the budget committee find out where we can, if we do increase their salaries, where that money can come from, and can that money come from, if we have the money to do it. Can we do that?
Can I throw it out there?
It's your, your motion, brother.
Maybe it'd be made, you know, it makes.
Is there a motion on the floor? What is the motion? We get a legal opinion on this, and also to find out if we can afford to up their salaries and how much, and then it needs to come back to the council to actually set it.
At our regular meeting?
At our regular meeting.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Tatum, seconded by Mr. Heffley. Any discussion?
I just do have one thing, though, if we're out of, if we're out of line making that ordinance on setting their salaries, how do we go about turning that around? We can always make a motion and change their salaries at any time.
Well, what he's saying is, that the original ordinance, correct, through the city, that allowed council to do so, if what Mr. Thompson is saying is true, from the way he reads it, and plus we have this ordinance on the books, perhaps that ordinance is in violation. Now, this is just my personal opinion, but I know council can, the city can go stricter, cannot go looser. So I don't think the ordinance would be out of line, however, that's part of the question that needs to be presented.
And I don't think John Abel would have put it through to us if it worked, because it is not.
Right, that was my second point.
It's an ordinance, so.
So what he's saying, though, is, if it was to come back, that that ordinance doesn't need to be there, what would the procedure be? The procedure would be that one of the council members brings the ordinance back up, council would have to discuss that, and it would be, it would become null and void by that.
Would it be whoever sponsored that?
No, any, not at all, because most of the people are probably gone.
I'm sorry, I'm not the new. If you want to change any word.
No, encourage council members to ask questions, that's how we learn off of each other, absolutely.
I just don't want to be in violation of law, you know, that's got to be addressed.
No.
It was looked at by John Abel, and John Abel gave his question before it was addressed.
So we got a motion on the floor? And a second.
To get a legal opinion for clarification.
Did you say from the municipal league, or just John Abel, or what?
I think it needs to come from the municipal league, don't you?
Okay, there you go.
I, you know, because I believe Mr. Abel gave his opinion of.
Just like you're reading opinions, so don't forget that.
But that, but this legal opinion from the municipal league quoted Arkansas statute. That's, you know, and they published this out to the entire state.
Correct.
So my issue is that Mr. Abel, the city attorney, needs to reconcile the difference of his opinion that was given that evening with the municipal league attorneys. That's what, Mr. Tatum, I believe you're asking, is that correct?
Yeah, I think we need.
For both the city attorney and municipal league.
I have a motion up to get the legal opinion from both Mr. Abel and the municipal league attorney on clarification of the paperwork that Mr. Thompson is speaking of. And also to check to see if there is room in the budget to handle this.
And I think we need to check with the municipal league if, to make sure we're not in violation on that ordinance.
That will, that will all go in the, that will all be in.
You know, you can also call the municipal league and ask them those things yourself. As an alderman, that's what we pay our dues for. And they're more than welcome to talk to you, and they're really nice about getting back to you right away. So, anybody can do it. So if you don't trust everybody else here, you can do it yourself.
Roque. Thompson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Tatum.
Yes.
Hefley.
Yes.
Ishmael.
Yes.
Ross.
And, and when that's presented, you're giving the person, you're presenting it to our ordinance plus the documentation he has together, so they can see both of them.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now we got comments and questions on city-related business.
I have a comment.
Yes, I, I do too.
So I would remind all council members that there is under FOIA, there are, and again, this was brought up, you know, this was detailed to me by the municipal league. FOIA applies to informal meetings. Does it apply to an informal meeting between less than a quorum of a governing body? And the answer from the municipal league was, the Arkansas Supreme Court has stated that the, that the Freedom of Information Act applies to meetings attended by less than a quorum of the governing body. Mayor Valderrito versus Eldorado Broadcasting Company quoted the case. The FOIA statute states that an informal, that informal meetings are covered as well as formal meetings under Arkansas Code twenty-five nineteen one oh six. Even if decisions are not being made during inform, an informal meeting, the attorney general has opined that the gathering of information regarding matters of public concern or discussing of matters that could ultimately be decided by, by the governing body is sufficient to implicate the act. So I would caution members of this council that if you're going to discuss outside of the opening and closing of a council meeting, items that we're going to bring up for vote, or that could lead to a vote, that you exercise caution that you not violate FOIA state statutes. That is my comment.
That was, Mr. Thompson, that was actually something they talked about at the municipal league meeting in January that we attended, is that if two council members happen to meet at a restaurant, if they discussed city business or something, or at a gas station or Walmart, and you're specifically discussing city business, yes, that's, that's strictly against FOIA.
But what can be done is any three councilmen could get together and call a special meeting. And it can be recorded and done here publicly, and they can discuss anything they want, and it's still FOIA. But it's done in a form. That brings me to another question. Since this is the chamber for us to do our job in, then this chamber should be made available to us to do our job in, and have some sort of rules and regulations on how to get into it and how to use it. Please. Next meeting.
Scheduling a meeting is also covered under the Q and A, and I can give you a copy of this whole thing, Peter. But this, but this, this addresses, you know, calling or scheduling meetings, you know, public meetings. But what I'm referring to specifically is that when you have councilmen huddled together in whatever format, I raise the caution flag that that discussion is subject to FOIA, and it can be constituted as, or interpreted as, an illegal meeting. So you need to exercise caution. If you want to bring things before the city, especially that are gonna be voted on, then you need to do so in a public setting, not between members of council.
I like that. I think we should do that.
So moving on, I need to make a point of clarification. There was an article written in the newspaper that had me quoted as staying, saying that the emails had been purged from my computer. That is not, if that's what come across, I'll apologize for that statement because the statement I made was, the email addresses was gone from the computer. Now, that is not a statement meaning that the previous mayor deleted anything. That was, that was meaning that when the computer guy had come in to transfer from his computer, whatever, his computer page to my computer page, it went into computer.
Limbo.
Limbo. So it took, it took a little doing, but he, when he come back and recovered the stuff, it quadrupled everything, so. So instead of bringing it back at once, it brought back four of everything. So, so it took about a day and a half of deleting stuff to get down to one. So that, I wanted to clarify that I was not meaning that the previous mayor did anything to erase or delete. It was just that it didn't get transferred over into the newspaper. And also, regular meeting is February sixteenth at six-thirty in this room. There will be a working meeting on the thirteenth? Yeah, next Monday, a week from today, at six-thirty in this room. Oh, yes, she reminded me today that there, February fourteenth is the day of voting in this room. Early voting starts tomorrow, Tuesday, and goes through February fourteenth. It will be in this room. So this room will probably be taken. If, if need be, we can move into the kitchen area, or we'll.
We got the senior citizen.
Or, yeah, we'll meet the senior citizen in the hallway if we have to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is there a way to bring back Zoom for meetings? I'm having surgery on the thirteenth, and we'll be down for six to eight weeks.
Oh, wow.
Is it possible to bring back Zoom?
We'll have to get with one of the computer, Mr. Covington, these are whoever the computer.
Well, and previously, other members of city council have joined the meeting via phone. You know?
And that can be an avenue too.
There was an extended period of time during COVID when Ms. Rowland was not available for health reasons and concerns. And more often than not, she was brought into the meeting by Mr. Smith via telephone and not Zoom. I think as long as there, you're recognized, you know, and you identify yourself. Mr. Abel said that that complied with, you know, the legal requirements of Ms. Rowland.
And the reason why we switched to phone off of Zoom is because we started having Zoom issues. I just want to make that clear.
Yes, no, I, I understand.
I didn't mean for you, I just meant for the audience, that was fine.
For the sixteenth, there's no possible way that I'll be able to make it into the chamber.
Yeah, you'll have to be out of surgery, so, okay, yeah, we can do that. Well, no more business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved and seconded, all in favor?
All right.
Martin, Martin and Hefley.